I'd like to call the order of the Dallas City Council meeting for Monday, July 17, 2023. First thing on the agenda is your roll call, please.
Counsel President Schilling?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Beriantos?
Here.
Counselor Briggs?
Here.
Counselor Collins?
Present.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counselor Shane?
Here.
Counselor Verden?
Here.
Counselor Jantz is excused.
Okay, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Any introductions, recognitions, or proclamations?
Not tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Any public comments? I see I got one here hand heard.
Already?
Yeah.
This keeps me awake at night, to have you know. I was really happy to see the budget from last year, the fiscal year, in the agenda tonight, because I went through it and, looking at my favorite places, the parks and the Aquatic Center, I discovered some interesting things. Before I tell you what they are, I've got to tell you that we, I've talked to a lot of people, a lot of people at the pool and the people, the groups that I'm in. Hardly any of them even know there's going to be a levy. I know it's really in the campaign, but that's pathetic. And when I try to, when I explain it to them, because I've got them all memorized, I don't want anyone to think I'm crazy. How long is that going to last? I don't know if it's going to last four years, five years. But when we do these presentations, and I'm sorry if I missed something along the way, but there is a graph, a red and blue line graph, that shows, you know, how much the general fund has, and then how it's going to fall off, and then we're going to be in the red. But we need some numbers. I need numbers to tell people. I want to know how much money the levy option one is going to raise every year for five years. I know we're going to get more homes, you know, and so there'll be a little more money. It's just an estimate. I want to know how much the varsity recreation levy, if it's on, how much is that going to raise? How much is level three, my personal choice, going to raise over the next four or five years? How much is that going to raise? And then, when I looked at the budgets from last year, especially the Aquatic Center, which of course is my best investment, Friends of Dallas Aquatic Center, the budget last year was $999,000. Jennifer Ward is a fantastic manager of the pool and the parks. She's a gem. You really did it. That good job when you hired her. She kept the pool budget and the parks budget under the amount that was allotted for them. The amount that was spent by the Aquatic Center of that $999,000 was $940,000 and change. So, you know, they've got a buffer there of about $50,000. However, the pool itself, that has more than 300 visitors a day from all the surrounding area as well as Dallas, made $584,000 and change. So, if you subtract that from the $940,000 that they spent in the budget, the city only paid $356,645.36 for the operation of the pool for this last year. And I want to know how that compares with the six fire and EMS jobs that are supposedly going to be cut, the six police positions that are going to be cut, the parks manager and maintenance people, and the code enforcement and the other facilities and maintenance people, how much is that going to be cut? And how does that compare with how much the levy is going to raise? And I know, I really love numbers, so I can really deal with this, and I want to know, because I want to be able to share it with people. And unless we do, it's going to be that guy at the pool. Levy, I'm not going to vote for a levy. I can barely make it the way I am. $30,000, are you kidding? I could never do that. No, these are the people we need to reach. And of course, there can be a lot of people that vote no, because they really can't afford it. But there are a lot of people that don't even know about it yet, and we hope that they will vote yes. And that isn't even counting, though, the money that the Friends of Dallas Aquatic Center has put into the pool over these last four years. It's over $150,000. We can't count on that going on. You know, we have to deal with the general fund and the money that the pool makes. Although, we put a lot of money into the pool, which is why it did so well this year, with the free passes and paying for the free passes. And we will continue doing that, because we're continuing our banners. But we really, I need some clarity on these things, and I need to be able to pass this on to other people, because there are so many naysayers out there that say, "Well, how much is that going to cost?" Well, what is that? You know, it just seems it's not enough information. And I know some people don't like numbers, and they don't want to hear a bunch of numbers at a meeting. But we need to know what those numbers are for those people who do want to know. So...
Thank you.
That's my, how much time do I have left?
You have about 10 seconds.
Okay. Vote no for fireworks in the city, because we had a terrible incident last night down in the park with illegal fireworks, and it was terrifying. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The agenda, that is to approve the June 20, 2023, City Council work session minutes, to approve the June 20, 2023, City Council meeting minutes, approve the July 7, 2023, City Council meeting minutes, June 20, 2023, financial report, and fleet services intergovernmental agreement with Polk County Fire District Number One.
I like all fleet services off.
Any others you want to pull off? Okay, well then we're going to vote on the items A, B, C, and D.
Move to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now we'll move on to item 4E, that is...
I'm looking for it. What page is it on?
32.
Two things I would suggest making some edits to. One was, the city of Dallas shall perform services, change "shall" to "may." Makes it sound like we would take the customers in and put them ahead of ours with the "shall." And the second edit...
Where is that again?
No, I can't find it.
Performance?
Looking, looking, looking. There it is. Dallas shall provide fleet repair service. I'd like to change that to Dallas may provide.
I would leave "shall." I mean, there's nothing here that suggests a timing or priority. They're going to want to know that their services are going to be provided, and this is a template agreement. I think it's April, or you're, no, you're not, you're not, you wouldn't do this. Who's?
Gary.
Gary.
Yeah, but Tom's here to discuss that.
I think the import of that language is, they know that we will provide those services.
Yes, and also, under performance of Polk Fire, the last item says that they shall coordinate with Dallas on an agreeable beginning and ending timeframe based on staff availability for maintenance and repairs to be performed. So that kind of gives that tougher there.
As our attorney says, it's okay to find. The other thing is that we don't reference anything about charging for parts or materials. And I've had some conversation with Gary, and he said that there's actually a pricing structure that, there's a national standard pricing structure we use, and I would suggest we probably insert that as an exhibit into the agreement.
Yeah, and we're amenable to that. There's a notice that we give when we do this, and so we'll, we can include that as an exhibit.
That's all. For those, I would agree, as long as our attorney does.
Shall I entertain a motion? Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
I didn't have this question until you suggested the language change from "shall" to "may." But are there ever times when we have a contract with an entity? Is this a contract or an IGA?
An IGA.
Okay, so when we have an IGA with an entity, and it says, "We shall provide fleet repair services," and they give us something to do that we either can't or don't want to do?
That would, we would have our mechanics assess what needs to be done. We do outsource work, or tell them, "We can't perform that task." There are some tasks which our mechanics can or can't do, and they have no problems doing it. And that, I believe, is built into this agreement. There's language in there that talks about services that we can perform or outsourcing. If we do outsource, we will notify them prior to anything that we do out, and what the prices will be.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, there are times where we, our mechanics are awesome, and they do great work, and they're very timely. But there are times where, you know, there's just so many things in the queue that if one of our clients comes to us and says, "Hey, I need this done, and I need it done like tomorrow," and we just can't fit them in the schedule. And so, understanding that, they'll, they'll take that vehicle somewhere else to get it done in the time, timeframe that they need. So, it's pretty flexible. We do a good job of doing as much as we can and getting it done in a timely manner. Our clients are satisfied with the work we do.
And I'll follow up. Under our work responsibilities, we do say that we will contact them with an estimate of what the repairs will be made prior to. That's, I think, our fourth bullet point under our performance. And we have an internal policy that says about markup for parts and materials. So, we would give them that estimate before the work was ever even done anyway.
Yeah, following up on Larry's point about that national fee schedule, or I'm probably using the wrong terms here, I'm talking about. Do we need to insert some language here to say that's incorporated by reference, or does the mere fact of attaching it as an exhibit cause it to be controlled by the agreement?
Well, I guess, if Thomas is saying what we do is include that estimate, those costs in the estimate that we provide, you're literally even, you don't need an exhibit. That just becomes part of our estimate. So, we control the source of our estimate.
Including parts and all the, everything?
Yeah.
Covers everything?
Yeah.
So, are we giving them an estimate on everything? Oil change, regular maintenance?
I mean, if, I would imagine, I mean, I'm not in the, in that realm of what they actually, you know, pay for, that goes out to them, but I would assume that that type of work would have a general, this is the cost for that type of service. So, those are probably easy to come up with. Where it's going to come in play is when you have to go out and buy parts. And we have, any part that's from $0 to $500, we do a 50% markup. And then anything above $500, we do $750 for that first $500, and then 20%, you know, so 20% above that, you know. So, if it's a $1,000 part, they pay $750 for that first $500, and then 20% above that next $500.
I like that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else? I'd entertain a motion.
So, do we, clarification? Do we need that language?
I don't think, we're in charge of the estimate, and we have our sources.
Move to approve as stated. Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm going to motion for Gary's. And the next item is a conversation I've asked to have with you on the council level. And I'll tell you my story, and you'll understand after I get through the story why I'm bringing this to you. On July 4, I sat in my backyard with the garden hose in my hand, put my long umbrellas down, and sat there and watched these fireworks go up 200 feet in the air in the alleyway behind my house. Fortunately, the drift was going away from my property. That started around 7:00 in the evening and finished a little after 11:00. So, the next day, I'm sitting there watching the news on TV. It's too hot to go outside, hottest day of the year, and my second son, Michael, comes to the back door. He says, "Oh, you didn't hear about the fire?" And I said, "What fire?" He said, "The one up on Denton Avenue. Found out that there were some people inside the house, and it started on fire, and they just grabbed whatever they could, and they got out." One of them is my 16-year-old granddaughter. She got out with the clothes on her back and her cell phone. And she called her dad. She goes, "I'm fine." He goes, "Well, good." Didn't know what was going on. So, then the department called my son and said, "You need to move your car. It's in front of the house, and it's in the way. Keys are in the house." So, it's hard to get a little pile of plastic running out. So, he had to run home and get the extra keys and move the car, and everything's fine. Well, my second son, Michael, comes to the house, and he says, "Oh," he says, "my wife thought your house was on fire." "No, it was the house a block away from me on the corner of Jefferson and Ash." So, we walked over there and watched the firefighters do a tremendous job of saving the house on the corner and working on the other house and continuing it. I talked to a couple of police officers. They were just dripping wet in sweat. One of them kneeled down on the ground, took his shirt off, took coat off, took his vest off. He was on one knee, and he says, "I think I need a clean shirt for tomorrow." So, they did a tremendous job, and I guess later on, there was either a green fire truck or a blue one, pastel color. Apparently, this guy owns his own fire truck and just happened to be driving by that house before it got reported, and he's the one they credit for saving the house next to it. There were, police department had 13 calls that day, the same for the fire department. We had three injuries of firefighters being taken to the hospital for excess heat, and they all were released without any problems. So, right after this house fire, we had a fire on McTimmon Road that we sent a mutual aid truck to. So, it was a busy day, and the firefighters did a tremendous job. But the reason I bring this up is the house fire on, I think it's on Ash Street, but I think the address is Jefferson, is fireworks related. Now, the first house on Denton was not, it was just a mistake in judgment, I think, but it wasn't anything to do with fireworks. But the fireworks one got me, and we're not doing anything. I'm starting to get some complaints. As you can see, I got a couple in this packet. I know a couple others have got some complaints about it. So, I thought, I wanted to bring this up for discussion with the council, see what you think. There's a, we had 10 different departments at the fires. I'm standing next to a Salem ladder truck, and I go, "What's it doing there?" Our ladder truck was fighting the other fire. So, it was, but 10 departments, including Alex Davis, who was the private contractor. And so, I got a copy of an ordinance the city of Kaiser uses, and they, as the headlines you can see on the newspaper article in here, they banned the fireworks on the 4th, and it really upset a lot of people in Salem and Kaiser. But this was from the Statesman Journal on July 5. And so, I know I've got a lot of complaints, and I just wanted to share this with you and to see what you guys are thinking. Is this something we want to do? I've been told that the state law is very hard to administer, because it requires the police officer to see the person actually light the fireworks. Whereas, if we had an ordinance, we could probably make it more refined. But you heard my story. So, what does everybody else want to say? Yes, Kim?
I don't understand what you just said, the last thing that you just said.
Well, I was told...
So, illegal fireworks are already illegal, right?
But they have to see them get set up, I understand, if we apply state law.
And so, if we pass an ordinance, you don't have to see them? You can just write a ticket to anybody?
That's there.
No.
I'll take.
All the return name, but I don't...
If you're prohibiting the use of fireworks, you wouldn't have to see them. You'd have to have evidence of who let.
I mean, there's already laws. You can't, you can't use fireworks that shoot up into the sky. You can't use them on the third. You can't use them on the fifth, you know. Well, they're being used, but to pass, is that going to fix it?
Yeah, I was going to say, you wouldn't have to see the person... Yeah, I was going to say, you, you wouldn't have to see the person light, but you, in order to cite, you would have to have evidence that they, that the person you're citing is the one who violated the ordinance.
Mortars laying on the ground or something.
Who lit it.
Yeah, who lit it. That's the challenge, right? So, that's where, that's where what our law enforcement officers do, and Tom, you can correct me if I'm misstating anything here on how your officers operate, is, and this is true not only in the area that I've worked, is they oftentimes fail to cite people because when you come upon a party where you suspect illegal fireworks were launched from because you were, happened to be in the vicinity when they went off, you approach that party, there's usually more than one person there watching. And so, then the question is, well, who's the one that lit it? And no one's going to point the finger, it was him or her. It's like, what are you talking about, officer? We're all here, we're just enjoying these little fountains. And so, you know, even if you see maybe the, the, you know, sleeve, the mortar, you know, mortar shells to be lit off from, you know, you cite one person, they go to, they go to the judge and they're like, I was not the one that did it. You know, I was there, I saw them go off, but it wasn't me and I, and I don't really know who it was. And so, you're really chasing your tail a lot with that. So, that's where we do say and, and look for, you know, who was the person that lit it? Did I see it happen? Do I have that evidence to say, you know, I know it was, you know, Sally that lit off that firework that went, you know, up in the sky and went off? And so, it's, it's really challenging and it's really a struggle. And, you know, we don't have enough police officers. I would say any jurisdiction doesn't have enough police officers in this state to adequately control, you know, illegal fireworks from being lit off. Because you just don't have, you don't have the people power to be able to see and observe and enforce this in a meaningful way to actually ban these fireworks from going off. The state prohibits the sale. People cross borders and, and, you know, go get them, bring them back. I, I just don't know how you stop that.
This, this memo from Kaiser says, make the sale or use to be able to go fireworks in municipal violation. So.
Yeah, that gets that sale. We don't, we don't ban sale. You could be, but then my brand says they could go to a community that doesn't ban sale and buy them and bring them in. Then you've got the use issue again as a matter of evidence if you cite somebody.
Lane, is there a different, oh, can I ask a question here real fast? To get to kind of the thought that you made, Mayor? Is there a different level of evidence that's needed for violation versus a crime?
No, you'd still have to show that the person you cited is the one who committed the violation. In, in, could you do something like, or a violation to frequent a place where illegal fireworks are used, which would allow the police to cite everybody in the crowd, but you want to do that? And of course, they're all going to say, hey, I just got here. I wasn't here when that. Yeah, that, that was a, yeah. That is extremely, it's pretty against.
The most successful, you can cite in some ways, honestly, when you have an ordinance that there was this big pile lighting going, oh, in, and most of the time, you see that one was watched and no one seems aware of it. Can I make a question, David?
I completely agree with Counselor Fitzgerald here. More laws are not going to regulate common sense. It just doesn't happen. As it is, there are no illegal fireworks sold here at the different booths around town. They're great fundraisers for organizations. We're already not selling those. So, this would, I, I can't imagine banning the sale within city limits. This would apply to a sparkler. You're going to arrest a bunch of kids? I mean, give them all a ticket? It just, it's not going to show common sense to have more laws that you can't force people to use common sense. I mean, my neighbors were very responsible, loud, albeit, I do live in a mortar shell neighborhood, but they were responsible. They weren't out there drinking and partying with their kids. It was fairly reasonable hours. Still, the illegal fireworks, if someone comes across something with a pile of illegal goods, the person that owns those is not violating the law. To have legal and Oregon fireworks banned, not be able to sell them here or to have, you know, kids not be able to purchase the sparklers.
I'm not saying selling illegal fireworks, it's the illegal ones.
But they're already illegal.
Not the illegal ones.
Illegal fireworks are illegal in Oregon. I mean, it.
Now, this gets right to the heart of the problem, this discussion we're having right now, because I don't, I don't have, I don't have a problem with passing the most severe or draconian law you can imagine because there's lots of things that you're not allowed to do. You know, you can't set off fire within the city, period. No exceptions. And, and one fire, one burned house, one injured or killed person is one too many, as far as I'm concerned. But this, the heart of this dilemma is, how do you enforce it? You know, and I'm, I, I don't like, I mean, I'm just not thrilled with the idea of putting a law in the books that we know is going to be flouted because we can't really legally stop people from doing it. And that's, that's the dilemma that's facing.
So, I have a statement, a question. So, I firmly believe, I'm not going to say, but I, I think we can set some laws, knowing that they're difficult to enforce. We have lots of laws that we know are difficult to enforce. So, that's my statement. My question is, can we creatively identify a way to not have to say, and I'm going to pick on you two guys. You two are setting off more. You two didn't do, they didn't do it, but we have them. Can we say that it's not about who set it off, it's about who is in possession of it and then take them away? Because there is no safe way, regardless of who you are or who you're protecting or even if you are in a particular area. There's no safe way to have those. And I'm with you. The church that I belong to burnt down because some kids were playing with fireworks and they weren't illegal fireworks, they just got out of control and they were supervised kids. It just gets out of control. So, is there a way for us to be creative and rather than saying, I saw whoever, or we pointed to finish with somebody, to say you lit it, but rather to say, you're in possession of an illegal thing and you're taking it away and now whoever's in possession is who's responsible?
Well, what's possession? I'm just going to go on a bit of a rant here, but just have been with me. Since I've been alive, the 4th of July, people shoot off fireworks, illegal, illegal fireworks. The matter is, we all know some bad news is happening on the 4th of July. And the news capitalizes on it. There's always something terrible that happens. And it really just becomes a reality when it hits home, when it gets closer to someone you love, someone who's your neighbor, or if it's yourself. Since I've been living here in Oregon, in Dallas, I've, I've seen these illegal fireworks. Although they are beautiful, I know they come with a danger to them. And not until this past year have I saw something that the repercussions on how bad this could be. Keeping all that in mind, a criminal, a criminal violation of firework, possession of fireworks, the level of proof is probable cause. So, that's, violations, the level of proof is even less probable cause. What I would say is, coming up to the 4th of July, a lot of times with the highway traffic control industry, what they do is we make public service announcements. So, we need to make public service announcements to say, hey, possessions of illegal fireworks are going to be strictly enforced within Dallas. We're in a, a ban, a fire ban, or, you know, we're in an area that's going to create some, you know, a lot of hazards. So, five days before, 10 days before, let the public know that this is going to be strictly enforced. So, that will gain voluntary compliance with people. That'll gain compliance with 50%. 30% will ask questions and then 20% will do whatever they want to do. So, that's my rant. Public announcements.
Michael?
My mind goes in multiple different directions on this subject. The more we enforce laws and we put those laws into effect, the more it drives it into the backyard. And what I mean by that is people get sneaky, it doesn't eliminate it. I was driving from Brooks, because that's where my brother throws his 4th of July birthday party for himself, and my entire family goes over, and I have never seen as many illegal fireworks lit in the City of Kaiser and Salem as this year. It lit up the sky. Now, if you want to talk about a way, I agree with the public announcements, I think being education preemptive, and on top of that, there was one other item I was going to talk When, and this is for you that are around on the 4th of July, and I don't, I can't answer it. When we had the fireworks on the 4th of July in Dallas, did we have as much active illegal fireworks as now? So, that was one. I'm not in favor of enacting more laws. Mr. Locke, which I'll bring, is, it's public record that he owns the house on Ash and Jefferson. He's the landlord. He is not in favor of more laws to get rid of fireworks. He is in favor of enforcing the current laws that we have. And Lane or the two police officers that we have in here, my question is, if somebody's in possession of illegal fireworks, we can take those fireworks, do we not?
Sure, we can. And just like with what Counselor said, if we had a law that says you're in possession of these, the state law already covers that. The problem is being at the right place at the right time. Even if we come up on a route that has fireworks and we suspect what's going on, having two or three people on, I can't babysit one house trying to catch them do it when we've got many other calls going on. So, it's just a, it's a, it's a resource issue.
So, to sum up what I stated is, it's going to count the height of the weapon that she did her, her public test. It's not for a lack of laws that we're having the issue, it's disrespect of our neighbors, but also an understaffing of our police and fire departments. And as such, we want to deepen our police and fire department, we want to, we're at, that's why we're educating the public about what we're doing as far as the law. So, that's my two cents.
I, I live in a location and I have, you know, every year, I'm biting my nails 4th of July, I really feel for everybody that's stressed out about it because I feel the same way, but there's all, yeah, there are already laws and I'm saying, well, you can't do it and we're saying it too, it's really, it's too permanent.
Larry? Counselor Shane got me thinking, I have a question for Tom. Do we respond to a call for illegal discharge of a weapon differently than we would to a call for a fire, illegal firework?
Either way, the call comes in, but oftentimes on the 4th of July, we get calls, the shots fired, common sense tells us that's probably a firework, we respond sideways in case. But it's just a matter of getting people in the area and trying to get down where it's coming from and who heard what, who saw what. Actually, fireworks are easier to find if it's truly somebody shooting it off. But it's just a matter of getting people in the area. If you're close, you might get somebody trying to bring it up. And if you're on the other side of town doing the same thing, want to know, going somewhere else. And it's not, frankly, if you had 10 police officers on, it would be the same thing almost. We've had, I've had years where we brought extra officers in on overtime to try to keep it down a little bit. And it's just, when you have a community even this size and say you have 10 people out there, it's just a matter of luck in the draw whether you're in the right place at the right time. Because whatever you do, one of these crowds, they're often drinking, no one saw anything, no one knew what happened.
Dan, Steve?
Yes. Just wanted to ask, mine that came up was just more a point of clarification. So, you indicated that one was related to fireworks, the other one, that one were related to fireworks. So, I'm just asking for clarification.
I got the second one on Ash Street. We had the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office come out and investigate and found out there was, and he highly suspected it was fireworks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can talk, because it's a very sensitive, I almost hit a hot topic, I stopped myself. But it's a very sensitive topic and strong emotions in lots of ways. But I want to make sure we don't just get into talking about angels on the ground again because we are a legislative body. All we can do, all we can do is allow or not pass laws. Go out there and enforce it. And the key to this obviously is enforcement. We've been talking about that from a lot of different angles. I have a question for Tom. Tom, given that all we can do is pass laws that we have, is there any statutory authority that you don't have now that we could give you that would make a difference, a real difference on the ground in terms of, of less risk and better enforcement? Is there or isn't there?
So, David, I'll, I'll give a little stab at that. I think there are some areas in the city of Dallas that are maybe a little bit more prone to fire spread if, you know, fireworks are in place, especially areas of the center of the city. I think of Bridlewood as a neighborhood with hillsides, a lot of fields around it. Fire started, if a fire started in that area, I think we're going to have more prone to spread than you would if it was happening downtown, you know, outside of City Hall. So, in my experience and being in other communities on the 4th of July, I have seen neighborhoods where fireworks are banned in that particular neighborhood because it is on a hillside, it's near the edge of a mountain, it's near an area that's more prone to, susceptible to fire spread. And so, that's something that the council could consider saying, hey, and it's a ban on all that.
You can act to the same problem. You can ban it, but how do you make the ban, how do you give a T?
And then that's correct, but just, you know, that's, that's something I've seen in other communities where they did allow fireworks, even more than fireworks as a state where they allow them. And they allow them in certain parts of the city, but those areas that are, obviously a little more higher risk for fire spread, they just say no. And I've seen that to actually be a little bit more effective in those neighborhoods. So, that's just an idea to bounce around. Beyond that, I, again, you're going to get to the enforcement and people just doing what they're going to do, like Carlos said in the beginning.
Kirsten?
So, one of the things I wanted to talk about later, but you kind of made an opening here, was that when there is a red flag, red flag warning, could we create an ordinance that bans all fireworks, legal, illegal, sparklers, regardless, given that situation, that announcement, that whatever a red flag warning is?
Yes, and that's what the City of Kaiser's ordinance is.
Yes, so. And that's what I think started out there. That's where I go first.
Can I, can I say that that was the backyard park desk?
It's not there now?
Yeah.
It's on the streets, it's on most houses. Drive down any neighborhood.
You're literally meaning into the backyard?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you meant just more, okay.
No, you, people will still have their fireworks, just like we saw in Salem this year, and they will, him, my, against that. I would rather people do it illegally in front and we educate them that it was a red flag and they're not with illegal fireworks and they're just going to do it, we enforce it to the best of our ability. But I am worried about passing any ordinance above what's already there that would drive it further into the backyard.
What Kaiser's experience been there? Yeah, but what's the experience been?
So, I can, I can follow up with the city manager of Kaiser and their police department and fire department to see what, what their experience was.
Because I take Michael's point, I mean, it's a valid point, but, you know, we're, we're still talking theory here. We, I'd like to know what actually happens on the ground. Since we have a test case, Kaiser, maybe we can find out what effect.
saw way more than the average.
Well, yeah, again, it gets back to the fact that all we can do is pass laws, Kaiser passed one, isn't doing any good, that's what I'm really asking.
Yeah, so, so if the council wants to have further discussion on this, I would recommend moving it to a committee. I can do some research on Kaiser and their, their, their ordinance that they passed this year, looking at, you know, volumes of calls and other things that they had, working with their, with their city. If you'd like to do that, I can gather that information and bring it to a committee meeting.
I would like that very much.
Safety committee?
Yeah, I think you could put it to the public safety committee.
There were a couple of things said tonight that I, I like, I want some more information, possibly. When we used to set off fireworks, for the illegal fireworks that are around town, were they as bad as they were this year, or less? I know we haven't had the fireworks on July 4th for a couple of years now, but when we did, I seen, I think a lot of people went to it. There's one right there.
I think, I think answering that question today would be anecdotal at best. You know, we have to go back and pull, pull call data and other stuff from over three years ago, over four years ago, at this point, and I just don't know if we still have that data, because of records retention laws. We can look to see if we have any information. Again, we can bring that to the committee if we do.
I also like what Carlos had to say, preventative advertising, remind people that we will get you if you do it.
One last thing, it was just this past, once July 4th passed, I have a friend from Woodburn, and he nailed it just like what you said. He was with his family, they were having a great time, and he could see that somebody was lighting off illegal fireworks, and there was already a ban in place in Woodburn, as was in Salem. But this person was one of the twenty percent, like I said, fifty percent are going to obey, thirty percent will ask questions, and then they'll probably obey, and then twenty percent will just flat out take whatever they want. So this person was shooting off the fireworks, and just so half his concerned citizens saw this, and they told him to stop doing the fireworks, what did he do? He continued to do the fireworks. This was great evidence, great testimony, great physical identification of the perpetrator to the police. So it's going to take help for the concerned citizens to step forward.
Brian, when you get information from Kaiser, or I don't know, maybe whoever's going to get information from Kaiser, I'd like to know, not only the call volume, calls of complaints, but also potential firework-related fires.
Okay.
I know that that, that's usually just a potentially, we don't know for sure, but that'd be great for us to look at, at the public safety committee. And then also, I'd like some, if you have time, or whoever's going to look into it, what kind of public safety announcements that that preemptive education have other cities done that had, they've already found to have a positive decrease? That would be great, that we can kind of mimic whatever other city did that worked, if it worked.
That was kind of the same question. I think if, when Brian calls, he may want to ask what time they actually let out, ordered the ban, because I understand that it was not done until late in the morning on the 4th. So it was not going to have any value, it had had none, it did not send the message that they had hoped.
Right, yeah, as I mentioned in the report, I believe I mentioned in the report, the, you know, timing is critical with that, and, and, you know, ban the day of is really just, it's, it's pretty performative at that point, right? Hey, we banned fireworks, and everyone already had them, and they lit them off, and so, you know, bans that are more successful, you know, at the education piece like Carlos says, are those that are done, you know, months in advance, and the education's taking place well in advance, so the people know. So, Mayor, do you want to refer this item, or do you want the council to refer the item? You can just do it if you'd like.
I'll just do it.
All right.
Safety committee.
Perfect, yep. Let's go ahead and do the public safety committee, that way we'll have a discussion in August.
Having come from, I have several family members that were wild on firefighters, I do understand the risk, and I've been that family member at home, horrified and worried all night, but overall, there, the risks are understood, and you think about the amount of times that someone does fireworks, yes, it can take one time that will destroy life, destroy a family, destroy a home, a neighborhood, half the state, like part of California, but what percentage didn't? I mean, that's impossible to calculate, but if you have a thousand people with a sparkler, yeah, one of them could start a fire that would burn the whole town down. This town has been burned down a couple of times completely, but what are the odds that's going to happen? So I think this is one of those times that I would love for people to have more common sense, I water everything, my neighbor's houses, my lawn, the backyard, the fences, everything. I would like to see people have more common sense, but I don't think another law is going to create common sense, and it's not a right I'd ever be willing to take away, to celebrate on 4th of July, ever.
Any other questions? No, we'll move on to comments from the council. Does the council have any comments? Okay, reports from the city manager and staff.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. So the first item up is the camping, the community campout in the park. There was, the discussion was initially brought up by Councilor Fitzgerald, back in May of this, this year, the Buildings and Grounds Committee discussed this on May 20th, 22nd of this year. Good discussion about that, they talked about, you know, possible offerings, risks, liabilities, some of the scoping that would be required. They asked the city manager to report back to the city council with a recommendation to form an ad hoc committee to help plan and organize this event. We did reach out to our, our insurance, our insurance agency, City County Insurance, they gave us some good guidance and feedback. So at this time, we're, we're looking for a recommended motion to create a community campout planning committee composed of no more than four city councilors and an equal number of non-elected citizen volunteers. There's a motion on page forty-nine.
To do what he just said, the motion on page forty-nine.
Oh, oh, being too.
Now we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Was there any discussion about putting in the temporary tents, the campgrounds in a certain part of the park?
So we did talk about marking, you know, spaces in the park for where we would have, you know, camping and tents put, we talked about having a camp host, we talked about, you know, a variety of different activities, fires, non-fires, when at the time you're to do it would be that we could have fires. So we talked about a variety of things, and I think what we were unsure of is, you know, how much risk and liability is there with all the things that we were thinking about doing? So we asked those questions to the City County Insurance, we got some good responses back, and I think taking that information coupled with, you know, what the committee talked about, we can start to get an ad hoc committee to really discuss where we want to go with that. So that's what we're looking for, and I would, I would recommend tonight, if this motion passes, that we get volunteers for who would want to serve on that committee from the city council.
How many people do you want on that committee?
Recommended to have four city councilors and just an equal number of non-elected citizens. So we'll do a solicitation with, you know, to join this committee and see if we can't get four of our citizens, and that doesn't include staff support.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously.
All right, so now we have the motion. Any volunteers from the council? One, two, three, four, all right, and Larry, good.
I have a question.
Yes.
I, I guess I'm, I maybe it's not a question, I'm assuming that Kim Idea, Kim on the ad hoc, she's going to be the?
The chair?
Wrangler, chair, yes.
Yeah. We can figure that out once we form the committee.
It doesn't have to be.
So, can the city reach out to other civic organizations specifically when we're looking for volunteers, scouts? I'm sure you have a zillion ideas of that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, if you have ideas on where you want me to send a solicitation directly, let myself or Kim Herring know.
I didn't mean to, but yeah. Excellent idea, Kim.
We, we will, we will charge for the camping likely, but that's something the committee will discuss, so. And Mayor, you're welcome to attend, you can learn more. All right.
Offering fireworks.
Perfect. Next item is on page fifteen, it is waiving fees for national night out events. National Night Out is a nationwide opportunity in encouraging our, our neighborhoods to join together with law enforcement and other public safety personnel to just get to know your neighbors, right, and come together as communities, and, you know, build relationships and strengthen relationships. And so, there are several neighborhoods in Dallas that have participated in this, I think last year we had seven to ten, and we're on target to do about the same this year. This does fall under our newly formed special event and block party permits process, which we're fine to do, and we're fine to take people through it. Because it's more of a city-sponsored type activity, didn't feel right to charge people the twenty dollar fee to be able to, you know, have their permits approved. So staffer recommending that the city council waive the fees for twenty dollars apiece, and those are, there's a recommended motion on page fifty-one to do so.
Mr. Mayor? I move to waive the block party fees for the 2023 National Night Out Block Party Events.
Move in a second, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would encourage each and every one of you to take advantage of this time to meet with your fellow community members. It was a great experience last year, and you will not make it to all the block parties, guaranteed. It's not worth it.
And David.
Go ahead, Brian.
I was just going to say, we'll let you know where the block parties are going to be, and we can have a sign up, so we make sure the councilers are spread out to all of our block parties if you'd like. Right now, I think we have six or seven in the queue, with another three or four that are expressing interest, so if that's of value to the council, we'll make sure that we kind of get a sign up list out, so that you'll can sign up where you want to go.
So I just have a question about how the city, because it is kind of city-sponsored or city-hosted, kind of, each neighborhood does their own thing, but how do we as a city reach out to neighborhoods that have not historically hosted neighborhood night out block party, and help them know that it exists, figure out how to make it happen, provide a public education? What, what do we do? I don't know.
Yeah, so Tom, I don't know if you want to answer that question?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Typically, over the years, what we do is push information out through web based or social media, the existing neighborhood watch community preparedness groups that we have, we encourage them to, we also encourage them to have their neighbors do it if they have someone that's maybe not part of their group, and then we start pushing stuff out a month or so ahead of time, advertising it, and Alice is going to be working on that force as well. And we're letting folks know it's there, let them know if they can contact her, she gets in touch with us, and everything they need to get it set up, and then coordinate times when they're going to have it, so we know when to let you folks in our public safety companies swing by and visit.
Excellent, okay.
And Alice has already created the flyers, she's already pushed some information out through social media, so that, that kind of campaign, education campaign's already started.
Okay, I'll go look, and thank you, thank you.
David?
Michael made my point for me.
All right, if nothing else on that, we'll move to the next item, which is on page fifty-two. Oh, you didn't vote? I thought you already did. You didn't vote? All right, it's all right, vote.
So we already have motion?
Come on, Mayor, keep me in line.
I did.
All in favor, the motion is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, just barely passed.
That was close, thank you. So next item is item seven C, this is on page fifty-two of your packet, and I'll invite our interim fire chief, April Wallace, to come up and give this report.
Welsh.
Welsh, Wallace, she goes by both.
I have not changed my last name through social security, so the city doesn't recognize me as Wallace officially. Everything else is fine except for social security, so, thank you for having me.
April's still the right first name.
What's that?
April's.
April is still the first name, so, thank you for having me. What I would like to propose is a reallocation of ARPA funds from the fire training facility to a fire engine. Just a real brief overview, we have a fire truck that is twenty-eight years old, the NFPA standard nineteen-eleven states apparatus should, apparatus should respond to first alarms for the first fifteen years, the five years after that be in reserve status, and then after twenty-five years placed in retirement. Engine one oh two is our second out fire truck, it's twenty-eight years old. And I know that we've gone through several different projects with the ARPA funds through our department, one being the substation to the training facility, and now I'm asking the reallocation for those funds to be for a fire engine. We have developed partnerships with our mutually partners, as well as Department of Public Safety Standards and Training, and Schumacher Community College. We've gone through the process of having several of our personnel become instructors, so we can do in-house instructing, and we also work with Polk One on a regular basis and have the ability to use their training facility, and then also with Southwest Polk to utilize any training facilities that they have, and then reciprocation for ours, too.
How much money are we talking about for the training facility versus the truck?
Well, the original amount that was allocated to us was one million dollars. We've done some research on several different makes, models, brands of fire engines, we're looking anywhere from about eight hundred thousand to a million dollars.
And how much was allocated to the training facility?
One million.
One million originally? David?
Lead time, if we, if we, if we placed an order for a new engine today, when would it be on the street and available for use?
Well, and this is?
Because I know the answer is not real soon.
It's, it's kind of, so, and this was the other reason why I'm asking for the reallocation of the funds. We were not budgeted for a fire engine until, I believe, twenty-five, twenty-six budget year, and then further out for a ladder truck, which would be potentially a bond. I don't know if I want to rely on a bond measure passing to buy a fire truck. We're looking at anywhere from twelve months to thirty-six months, however, we have contacted several of our vendors that we deal with on, on a regular basis. We, there are two fire trucks that are demos that are available, that would be made available to us during this current budget year. The one is, they're both right around nine hundred thousand dollars, and they would be every bit of capacity that we would need. The problem is, and it's going to be a little controversial, is they're not white, they're red and black, so, I know it sounds silly, but when we, when we bought the red ambulance from City of Salem, there was some pushback on that, that was what we could afford at the time, right, because we had bought that because the previous ambulance had been in an accident and totaled out, and we had funds, but only a certain amount. City of Salem happened to have had an ambulance, it was red, it was going to cost anywhere from ten thousand to eight thousand dollars to either paint it or wrap it white, and we just chose to keep it red.
Follow it, can I follow up on that? Yeah, I'm, I'm totally in favor of this, a hundred percent, I mean, yeah, the, we, we need the training facility, we need all these things, but, you know, we have a limited budget, and it's a difficult choice, but that's, our job is to make difficult choices, it's what we're here for, it's what we're hired to do. And I'm, I don't like the idea of sending our volunteers out on a unit that's almost thirty years old, I'm totally in favor of this.
Well, and the other thing that I should mention, too, that even though a million dollars was allocated to this training facility, the price of products are just out of control right now, and I know that it would cost quite a bit to build up that ground, and I don't know if a million dollars would actually be able to support the facility that we would need.
And if we waited two years to order an engine, it would cost more then.
It would, and then it would push us out potentially another two more years, so then we're looking at four years for a fire truck as opposed to twelve months.
I'm authorized, the city manager to reallocate the ARPA funds dedicated to a fire state training facility, and instead apply those funds to the purchase of the new fire engine.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, earlier?
I ain't giving this a lot of thought, and I'm just going to go on a little bit of rant to get here. In the spring of two thousand twenty-three, we agreed that addressing public In the spring of 2023, we agreed that addressing public safety services needed to be a priority in our operational need. This includes the police and fire department. We need to work within a framework that the foundation of health and safety of our citizens in Dallas will always be our first thought. We have come to a crossroad that presents two options with the fire department of City of Dallas and the ARPA fund. One road leads to funding and training and education of the fire department through the ARPA fund. This is an intrinsic value with the training and education division of the fire department. The training goes a long way into making sure that each firefighter from the probationary firefighter to the chief of the fire department is up to date in meeting certification requirements. The other choice is to purchase a fire engine to replace an apparatus that has been far exceeding its functional use. This is an operational hardship for the Dallas Fire Department. It may look like only of an intrinsic option that we can touch and we can feel, but it is an immediate need for the fire department. Fire Chief Welsh has presented acceptable training and education alternatives. The added value of collaboration with the other agency through partnership is another big benefit. This right here leads me to support the ARPA funds to replace Engine 102. Lastly, I recommend that we make the best of the Engine 102 after we retire it. For example, we could use it for probationary firefighters to use as a training apparatus for driver education, fire drills, and anything that's related to fire operation. One thing in our business that is constant and in life is change. Ultimately, this choice comes down to a change in priority. I trust that the change in the ARPA fund is a step in the right direction, which alleviates this operational hardship for our fire department. This choice is a market improvement that gets us closer to our vision of preserving the health and safety of everyone who lives in Dallas, works in Dallas, and visits the city of Dallas. And I'd like to hear everybody's thoughts.
Just to follow up on the reason I made the motion is this fits strictly into what we wanted the ARPA to go through, and that's capital improvement projects. This is one project that is a life threatening, not just for our citizens, but for our firefighters. And that's why I'm in full support of changing this.
I don't have a statement. I just have a request that we add the fire training plan. I can't, what did you call it?
A fire training facility.
Well, no, the plan, not the facility, the plan of how you're going to keep everybody.
Oh, correct.
That we add that to upcoming Public Safety Committee. We kind of have a, we don't kind of, we have a standing, we have a standing agenda item where we constantly are talking about our police station. And I'd like to just have that be a regular check in with us. Your plan is good, and we just want to make sure that we keep it up. And also, I would like to make sure that we, again, to the Public Safety Committee, that we talk about this controversy and making sure that we're making decisions and who's, why are we making decisions and who is making those decisions? Doesn't need to be done now, but we can do that at Public Safety. We can have that conversation.
I'm completely in support of the suggestion here, but I'm honestly curious why on earth someone would care what color a vehicle is?
Believe me, they.
I've lost my arm. Wait.
The Dallas Fire Department has been around for 146 years and has a very, very rich volunteer tradition. When, a very long time ago, there was, and this is just like the folklore. There was a red fire truck and then there was a white fire truck. And the two chiefs got into a heated argument about which one was better. And it boiled down to like a coin toss. So all the fire trucks at that point became white. And ever since then, that's just the tradition of Dallas Fire EMS.
Thank you for letting me know.
It's silly, but when we did our push out and our press release for the ready ambulance, our, our, our quote was, it doesn't matter what's on the outside, it's what's on the inside that counts.
That's right.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
I take your point perfectly, and yes, it's cosmetic. It has nothing to do with the utility or the effectiveness of the tool. And I couldn't care less personally what color they are as long as they do their job. But April is right. I once suggested to a former fire chief, now retired, that we consider changing the color of our fire trucks. And I got a rant that lasted half an hour. So yes, people do, for some people, it is a hot button.
Yeah, so notwithstanding the debate on color, staff feel it's prudent to get the fire truck here as fast as we can. So we're going to pursue one of the model trucks that's there that's red and black. That'll end the debate hopefully.
Let's vote.
So.
I have just a quick question, April. What are your plans to do with the old equipment? Typically, I think we've sold it to other departments. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
So with the approval of this, we'll form a committee to figure out what the best option for that is. I actually really appreciate the option of leaving it as a true reserve fire engine and using it for training, because I can't begin to tell you how many times our staff and volunteers have gone out to drill and have all the hose off the fire trucks and the tools, and then they get a call. So I think that that would be a very great idea to have that fire engine dedicated to that.
Can you still get parts for it?
I don't know. That would, that would be, that would be a fleet maintenance issue.
Because I know at some point in time, that does become a real issue.
You're correct. But I can tell you that our fleet maintenance has been remarkable in the care and the service of that fire truck to get it to where it's at.
Do you have covered storage for it? He would probably be sitting outside, wouldn't he?
I don't know. We would, that would be something that we would just need to explore at this point.
Anything else? Carlos?
Yes, with the new truck, would you be transplant hoses? Or would that come with brand new hoses and brand new apparatuses?
Typically, it's going to be all brand new.
Any questions from this side of the room, because you're behind me?
Thank you.
Nope.
I think it's a great idea. I'd like to see us include the cost of the raft. You say it was eight or 10,000. Just wrap it white and call it good.
We can look into that.
I think that's all we're asking.
I mean, if we have a million.
Well, if, so if I can tell you the other part to it, if there was money that was left over from the purchase of the fire truck, we would like to utilize that to upgrade our current training area that we have that's next door to the fire station and the lot. Look at potentially purchasing either more props or be able to put a fence to secure a little bit more. So I would rather see the money go towards helping maybe enhance what we currently have for training.
And that'll be a further discussion for the council once we know how much the fire truck itself will cost.
Right.
And other, and other ARPA projects that, we know a few of our ARPA projects coming in under budget. And so once we have a good idea of what funds are remaining, but before December of 2024, when we have to allocate all the funding, we'll button up those final, final three projects.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. I do want to tell you one small anecdote. Years ago, there was something wrong with one of the trucks. So the outfit, I forget the name of the company, and Eugene came up, picked it up, took it down there and fixed it. Well, they didn't know how to get back to Dallas from Eugene, so they had to go through Salem. And they were involved in a car accident on 12th Street and Center Street. And at that time, I was the agent of record, and I got this police report responding department, City of Dallas. The company had to take it back to Eugene and fix it again, but they just, City of Dallas was on this one. We were in it. Okay, next.
So before April walks away, I want to have her give an update to the council on some changes, some staffing changes that we made to provide 24-hour coverage in our fire department services. So April, can you give that update?
Yes, we're very excited about this part. Again, for the first time in 146 years, we actually have a full 24-hour fire and EMS coverage. We have dual role firefighter EMTs, firefighter paramedics. We have updated the EMS quarters to a dormitory. So we do have sleeping quarters now. And talking to the crew grants, we're just a weekend, but it has been very helpful. We already were able to provide a first out fire engine to, to Polk County Fire District Number One when they had a structured fire over the weekend. And then we've also been able to provide additional EMS services too for our citizens. So.
Yep. And so for the council's benefit, we were able to do that through two means. One, the renovation of the EMS building, removing the kitchen and instead putting a dorm room in there. And then allowing our 24 staff to, you know, use the upper floor of the fire department for their, you know, eating and dining and lounging needs. So that's how that took place. That was in the capital plan this last year. So that's how that was paid for. The staffing was looking at our flexible scheduled employees, which were single role before, and making them dual role. So we didn't hire any additional employees to make this happen. It was just restructuring with insight. And I want to thank April and Deputy Chief Rogers for coming up with that plan, putting it together and making that work. So all within the existing budget.
Right. Do we have a plan to communicate that to a press release or?
We did a push on Facebook, but yes, we will do a press release too. We, we've been kind of busy. Just, just so you're, just to kind of give you a little bit of insight. So we're going into like, in the, like the 50th hour of our shifts. And we've handled almost 50 calls. So it's been very busy.
Yeah, and so we made the transition to the 24-hour coverage on July 9th. So this is, right?
July 10th.
July 10th. So it's relatively new. We're, we're just a week in. And, and so, yes, that's kind of where we are. And I think it will be good for us to work with Allison to get a press release and a good story on that. So.
Thank you, Stu.
Great job.
All right. The last item for the city manager's reports is the Denton Avenue speed study results. And I'll invite Tom Gilson to come forward and talk about this as he does. This is just a reminder, we had a citizen came in at the last, it was the last council meeting, the one before, I can't remember now, but at a recent council meeting and complained about traffic and speed on Denton Avenue. So Tom, previously before she came in and gave her comments, had completed a study, but then we did another study on the other side of Jasper, and the results are included in the packet. But Tom, go ahead and walk us through those.
Sure. So actually, before we even knew you guys complained, we had a study that we had done on Denton between Jasper and Orchard. In the packet, you'll see we have these, these speed data analysis sheets that come from our software. So the first one you come to, which is, has a vehicle count of just shy of 6,000 vehicles. That was done back in basically latter half of May for a period of about eight days. It showed about 6,000 vehicles. That vehicle count is both directions. So it's eastbound and westbound. The average speed of all the vehicles going by was 22 miles an hour. The speed limit there you can see is posted 25. Has the 85th percentile of 27. And what that means is that 85% of the vehicles that went by that traffic counter were going 27 miles an hour or slower. So that, that 27 is the highest speed of 85% of them.
Says 26 here.
That's the next report.
Oh.
Yeah, so the one prior to that is with the, the just shy of 6,000 vehicle count was 27 for the 85th. And then the 10 mile an hour pace speed, that's the, the 10 mile an hour gap that has the highest number of vehicles within it. And so that 10 mile an hour pace is 16 to 25. So you can see that, you know, most of the vehicles are going at or below the speed limit, the posted speed limit there. After, Brian requested to have, after the meeting, to have us do another count on Denton, this time pointing more towards, I think the complaint came from, and that's between Tildner and Jasper. So we're right about where Heath comes down. It was a little bit longer of a count, so we've got a few more vehicles in there. But we're just shy of 12,000 or about 11, 11 and a half thousand. Again, the average speed is 22 miles an hour. The 85th percentile is one mile an hour, you know, less, so it's 26. And the pace speed is 18 to 27. All the reports, you know, to present to you, I don't have them in front of you, but just to kind of let you know, on the second one that had the 11,500, the fastest speed that it actually recorded in the, in the whole report was just 46 miles an hour, which isn't that much. And there was only, only three vehicles above 40 miles an hour that was recorded in that, that whole period. So out of all the reports I've actually done, that's some of the lowest speeds I've ever seen, especially on a collector. I guess with that being said, that's what I have to present for the speed studies. Are there any questions for that?
Typically, Tom, I know we've had this done in other sections of the city over the past many years. Typically, the speeders are the people that live in that section of the neighborhood. It's too bad you can't identify which is which.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, you can, I, I can tell about what time of the day they're going through.
I noticed here also that the frame for Den included when the fire was up there. And I went up there and looked at it myself, and there was a lot of traffic looking at the fire.
Yeah, that, that day did have an increase, especially in the mid, middle part of, of, middle part and later in the day as, you know, the lucky lose were going through there. But you can definitely see there's a trend in the morning. There's more eastbound traffic on Denton. And then in, just people coming and going to work.
Yeah, so thanks, Tom. I want to point out a couple other further things to the council. We did receive a letter from Mrs. Anderson dated June 29th following up on, you know, their concerns. They did request a traffic control device, either a four-way stop at Jasper and Denton. They talked about speed humps or other mechanisms to try to slow down traffic. Their concerns are predominantly for the, the neighborhood kids who, you know, play on the streets. I know I live near this neighborhood, and my son does play basketball on Denton with his friends. So, you know, I'm cognizant and aware of those concerns. They signed a petition. I think they had 25 or 26 individuals, you know, sign that requesting the council to enact some sort of speed control measure. Given this speed study, it just doesn't seem justified that there is a speeding issue here. There certainly is a lot of traffic volume, but the traffic volume is well within the bounds of what you would expect for a collector street. And this is a minor collector, but again, for the council's benefit, what a local neighborhood street does is provides, you know, transportation route from a house, you know, to a, to a minor collector. A collector gathers that neighborhood traffic, funnels the traffic to that street. It's more of a through street. Stop sign to allow people to be able to flow through there. Those minor arterials or those minor collectors and collectors will then funnel traffic to an arterial. So for example, Tom, is Orchard arterial? Or is that a major collector?
Should be a major collector.
So that's a major collector. So minor collector goes to the major collector on Orchard. Orchard then goes south, connecting up with Kings Valley Highway and Main Street, which is a, which is your arterial road. So from a functional classification standpoint, you know, the, the road is functioning as it's intended. There are certainly more traffic, because now we've made that connection from Tildner up to Hillcrest, enabling the neighborhoods, you know, in the Hillcrest area and further to the west to be able to utilize Denton for access. The letter talked about, you know, a bypass for Ellendale. Denton has become that bypass. It has been. Now, Hillcrest and, you know, Douglas don't have to go all the way down to Ellendale. They can use Denton to be able to get further east in the city. So again, it's functioning as it's designed, as it should be, as it was planned in the transportation system plan. So again, cognizant of the, of the concerns, aware. Ms. Anderson did do a public records request for any accidents or road rage incidents. You know, other, other, you know, traffic related concerns for the area that generated that report, which was asked for, for April, May, and June essentially, generated three incidences. Two of them were, you know, from Ms. Anderson and her, and her husband. And so again, there's, just doesn't seem to be justification for making any modifications to the traffic that's holding on to Denton. Staff recommend no further action, but we're, we're happy to be able to. to be able to share this information.
Tom, I think you hear one of the complaints, 40 miles an hour on June 20. I don't see any, it looks like it went from May 17 to May 25, and then June 20 to July 10. Is that right? We didn't want it to continue us through the month of June?
Yes, that's right. So we conducted the first speed study before we even received the complaint. You know, we identified through our traffic safety team meeting, because we had received a complaint about this area before, just to staff. So we had done a speed study before the complaint came to the council. So that was the first one. I received that complaint. I looked to see the first speed study, coming a little bit further to the west. Asked Tom to do another speed study further to the west. So the complaint that came in of over 60 miles per hour, you know, again, I don't use radar guns to know they were actually going 60 miles per hour. It's hard to gauge how fast vehicles were going, especially given the size, a perception issue that, you know, some, some people look at big vehicles, and they think they're going faster, but they're really not. So it's hard to know how fast that vehicle was actually going. It could have been going 60 miles per hour, it could have been going slower. But yes, the studies do not capture that entire time period.
So the equipment wasn't installed on June 20, the day that that alleged complaint came in?
Correct.
It's not that?
Yeah. So the equipment was installed. You can see the speed study dates. The first speed study, which had about 5,900 vehicles, installed April 7, or May 17 through May 25. And the second one was June 28 through July 10. So it was not installed during the week of June 20.
I think this is demonstrating the complainant's argument. And I think it speaks volumes, because what we're seeing here is voluntary compliance. So you're not going in what you want that is going to promote voluntary compliance, whether it's a stop sign, speed limit sign, or a bump in a road. These numbers do not surprise me, because if you're being watched, you're going to do voluntary compliance. You're going to watch the speed limit. Only when you're not being watched, you're not being monitored, that the speed, that we're going to have violators. I don't live on Denton Road. I live on Barbary Ave. And I have seen high-speed pursuits with police chasing fast-moving vehicles. But this just makes the complainant's argument.
Yeah. So let me, let me address the notion of them being watched. The, this is not a report generated from our radar machine that we towed around town that shows people how fast they're going. This is generated from a device that's about this big. We put it on a utility pole on the side of the road. So unless you know exactly what that box on, on the side of the road is, it has, you know, little holes in the box that shoot the radar camera out, going in both directions, that gathers people's speed. So you have no visual indicator that you're being watched when we install them. And so I would say that most people, of the 11,500 people that went by, at least one person knew, because that was me. I knew what it was when I saw it. And I happened to be going, I think, 22 miles per hour.
Sure you were, sure you were. I got it, I got it unrecorded.
Maybe, maybe I was going 46. No, I was not. Because I'm aware of the concerns and the issues there. But so, you know, I saw it. I knew what it was when it was up. I was happy to see it up, because I had asked for it to be up. But it's, I would doubt most people know what that is when they go past it. It's not on the road. It's not visual. People don't see it. It's very, you know, incognito. And that's by design, because we don't want people to know they're being watched.
Yeah, there's no tubes. There's nothing on it that says speed, anything. It's a little black box that mounts on a pole.
I have one question. Is it possible to take, and I don't know what it's called, but it's the little tripod, and it's, shows you exactly how much outback you're driving, and have that be in this general area more often?
So we, we have one speed trailer, called a speed trailer. We have one, only one still, Tom, right? So we have one speed trailer, and it gets requested all the time. And so when we get a new request, we add that to the list, and then, and then it just gets rotated around. And we have volunteers, our volunteer policing program, that, that move that. It will stay in place three to five days.
So when we don't have requests, we just move around town where we normally get complaints. It's always somewhere.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
They get down for a long drive.
What about that permanent installation that just went up on Levens recently?
Yeah. And so I'll talk about that in a minute. We have, I know the trailer's been on Denton before. It's, I've seen it myself. And so it has been there. So we did recently install two radar signs that have this, you know, your speed is, and it shows. And those are areas where, one, we received lots of complaints. Two, we were able to validate that people do go faster there through a speed study, Levens being one of those. The other was on West Ellendale as you're coming east into town. And so, you know, through the work that Tom does in his, his division in Public Works, we're able to validate that, yes, there is an issue here. And the recommendation through the traffic safety team, which Tom, Chief Simpson, myself, and our Public Works Director Gary Marks are on, make up that team, decided that the installation of those two signs in those two locations made sense. They're not super inexpensive. How much are those signs, Tom?
Just between $3,000 and $4,000.
Yeah. So they're about $3,000 and $4,000 apiece, apiece. And so, you know, as we have some budget to allow in the street fund, we'll, we'll buy some more of those and put them up in the areas where we know we have problems and they're, they're substantiated. I wouldn't put one on Denton, because again, we're not seeing speed issues there. We know that, right? Where, you know, I mean, there's other neighborhoods. There's an area just south of, as you go towards Jonathan, south of Miller, I would, I would think that that would be, if that's a local street, 25 miles per hour, and we had more speeding issues on that road, which is short. It's a very short length. But that speed study showed worse conditions than this one.
Michael, you live on, on Lockrell. What's it like there?
I just don't like my speed bump. FYI, speed bumps are horrible, as far as a neighbor, because whoever's house in front of them, it is a bump, and you hear it all night long. And then you also, it's at the bottom of a hill, so you have all the diesel trucks accelerating going up the hill past my house. So are there cars that go fast on Academy? Yes. Do I think that it's well managed? I am blessed to live by the Aquatic Center, the skate park, and the Lockrell Middle School, which have police presences at times, especially when there are kids present. And so I thank you, Tom, for that slowing it down. I avoid those areas at those times of day. If you live on a minor collector, or a major collector, or an arterial, it's not necessarily convenient, but it's your choice to live there.
Yeah.
I didn't move to Lockrell, not knowing that that street was going to be busy. So I was pleasantly surprised to see the traffic study. And I've seen this, seen the camera in action. I was, had the same thing as Carlos, was very happy to see that it's not Big Brother watching you with a white sign saying, here, slow down, because you're watching me. It's an accurate traffic glimpse. So thanks for putting me on the spot.
At least I could do.
You like it.
Anything else?
Well, how's yours? How's yours?
Uh, no, nothing else on that, other than, you know, I do want to-
I have a thing about the signs.
Oh, sure.
On Levens, so I normally, if I'm going in where I have my 11-year-old daughter, and she's an eagle eye for any violation whatsoever. So the minute that she sees, unfortunately, my, that's his digital, mom, that says 26. Did you see the sign? I mean, she's very good about that. But when she's not with me on Levens, it really did remind me to tell you, not that I was, but it really did. Just like a little slow down, really? Because it is white, and there are so many people going faster, then it is easy to just be like, oh, hold on, I'm almost there. And you go a little faster. But I think it's a really cool reminder. I like this.
Yeah. And that was, that was installed in conjunction with a crosswalk that we put on Academy Street going into the bottom lanes. You know, and we've got a speed sign for them. My intention to buy that, that crosswalk being installed, and being, make sure that people were aware and slowing down. And it just, it brings attention and kind of hold them out of a lull if they're not really paying attention, driving down Levens, because it is a straight stretch for a while. And we wanted to make that intersection pedestrian safer. So that's, it was a good reason to put it there.
It's great to have that. It's a major collector. It's a street a lot of people use to bypass the one-way grid and get around it. So, yeah, having that control is a good idea.
Yeah. I will say, and I want to give, I appreciate the neighborhood in, you know, Denton coming out. I appreciate their, you know, their petition. I'm happy to know that they're engaged. But again, you know, the data doesn't support, I think, what we're looking for, what they're looking for in, in terms of a traffic control device, you know, or speeds occurring in that neighborhood. We will continue to allow the speed trailer to be added to that area and made on the regular rotation. And we'll continue to evaluate that as time goes on.
Does anyone from the city reach back to them and tell them?
We'll let, we'll let Ms. Anderson know. And we did, and we did send her a copy of this agenda to invite her here tonight. And I'm not sure the people, if anyone in the audience is here for that item, but.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is the second rated ordinance, ordinance number 1885.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So this is, can I flip there fast enough? This is an ordinance declaring 0.26 acres more or less of territory being tax lot 5800 on Polk County Assessor's map, 7.5.30 DD, annexed to the city of Dallas and withdrawn from southwestern Polk Rural Fire Protection District, and designated the zoning of said property as residential low-density RL, and declaring an emergency.
I declare ordinance number 1885 to pass its second reading, and will now place it on for final passage to secretary. We'll call our own, please.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Burden?
Yes.
Counselor President Schilling?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Beriantos?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
I declare 1885 to pass its second reading, and pass by unanimous vote. As a reminder, we will be leaving this meeting and starting ERDAC meeting in a couple seconds. Anything else about the order from the city council meeting? No more questions?
Sure.
Close the city council meeting and open the ERDAC meeting. Can we get by with the same rule call? Okay. The next item is approve the minutes of the June 20, 2023 Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, carries the unanimous. Proposed revisions to the minor improvement grant program.
Thank you, Mayor Woods. So I will invite our economic development specialist, Tyler Ferrari, to come and present this report. Tyler's supervisor, our economic and community development director, Charlie Mitchell, is on vacation.
Good evening. Charlie is on a boat, and I am here. I couldn't imagine being anywhere else. So thank you all for giving me the opportunity to share these changes tonight. So as you all are aware, the Urban Rule Agency provides $1,000 minor improvement grants to downtown building owners and businesses for minor building and structural improvements to their properties, in an effort to improve the downtown's atmosphere as well as improve these buildings for overall use. Previously written into the minor improvement grant guidelines, nothing that prevented a building owner from applying for multiple grants for different addresses within the same building. And so this was something that we have come across in the past fiscal year, that we've identified as a potential loophole that we'd like to fill. Not because we don't think that the projects that were applied for were worthy, only because we have a limited amount of funding every year, and we'd like to spread around the funding to as many building owners as possible. So the major change here is that we'll, that we're redefining property as defined under Polk County Records of one building on the same tax lot. So for example, if one building is on the same tax lot but has multiple addresses, it can only apply for one grant. And that's the same as a building that has only one address on the same tax lot. And so this is, this enables us to be able to spread around these funds more equally, and to more businesses and building owners.
Should we have an example of what you ran into with this?
Yes. So this past fiscal year, we've had a building owner that owns a couple of properties on Main and Mill Street. They're all, they're all one attached building. So from, from general property, they all appear in one building, but they have minor addresses. And so he was able to apply, under our, under the ERDAC guidelines, receive $5,000 of our $10,000 of minor improvement grant funding for each of the specific addresses that he applied for. So under the ERDAC, we treat his building as one physical space regardless of the amount of addresses. And he'd only be able to apply for one grant for that building each fiscal year.
So another good example, this is different than the property that Tyler's talking about, but the barber shop over here on Mill and just off Jefferson's, like the barber shop, the decorated wall, there's the crystal mirror, and the movie theater, there, those are all on one property, right? Even though there's different tenants, you know, with different addresses, and then there's the, the residential units above those, those buildings on the second floor, those are all one property, right? One tax lot owned by one person. And so to avoid the minor improvement grant being used four times for that one building, this is what the changes are intended to do, right? So one property owner's not getting, you know, $4,000 or $5,000 for each of their tenants. They're only able to get one per year, so that we were spreading out those dollars between the different properties instead of just the buildings themselves, or the tenants.
Yeah. I understand, it says here that ERDAC voted unanimously for this. Can you tell me what the trigger for this was? And here's why I'm asking. Whether, whether you give five, $1,000 grants to five different properties, or five $1,000 grants to five different parts of the same property, you're going to get in total the same amount of facade or of improvement. So what's the issue here that, why is it bad to do it in one way? And what triggered this?
So again, it was one property owner applying for five separate minor improvement grants for what essentially was the same project, which was an awning improvement project. And so this property owner had also received building improvement grant funding. And so they were applying for additional funding through a minor improvement grant program to fund the same project.
So they were basically lumping a bunch of grants together to do one job?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes. And so, and so our main focus is, this isn't a determination on the quality of the project. This is more of a determination of wanting to ensure that as many property owners within the urban renewal boundary have that same possibility to apply for that $1,000, and have that same likelihood of being awarded it, because if one property owner is able to take up half of the allocated funding for a year, it limits the amount of projects that can be done across the district.
Thanks.
Kristen?
Go ahead, Brian.
I was just going to say, another answer to your question is that the building improvement grant program is structured this way already. The minor improvement grant's not. And so it's also bringing consistency between the two grant programs, because the building improvement grant program already says that you can only get one grant per property defined by its tax lot. So this just brings both programs into consistent, you know, application.
That gives it more context. Thanks.
So my question is, I'm glad you brought up this specific example of the crystal, the decked-in wall and the movie theater. If any of those tenants wanted to apply for a minor building improvement grant, could the tenant apply rather than the building owner?
Yes. So a tenant can apply. They need to have the building owner sign off on it as, because they're making improvements to a building that's not theirs, right, that there's leasing space. But again, if that tenant applies, it disqualifies any of the other tenants from being able to apply for a grant that fiscal year.
If the owner signs off.
If, if the owner signs off, and they're awarded a grant, that disqualifies any of the other tenants until next fiscal year.
So my, I just might need help figuring out how this all works. I'm concerned with this. I totally understand where you're coming from. My concern is, I totally understand where you're coming from. My concern is that we might accidentally hogtie a, a small business owner when, if the building owner says for exactly what you just pointed out, no, I might want to apply for this lady, and now the business owner, it's a crystal mirror, they want to make a, now they can't do anything. And I'm wondering, is there another way we can get around this with, without then taking that away from our small business owners that just happen to be a tenant of?
You know, so I think there's two things to play there. One, you know, a tenant, assuming most lease agreements are written this way, a tenant's not going to have authority to make changes to this building without the property owner saying yes or no.
Even things like a, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I mean, you know, they might be able to make some interior changes, but, you know, exterior stuff or structural things, you know, new electrical, that's all going to be a landlord, you know, the owner, saying, hey, yes, we're just going to do these things, we're going to make these changes. Or a person, a small business that owns their building. And so I, I, I don't think that's a major concern.
Okay.
You know, the concern that we're trying to address is that, you know, we have a whole lot of properties in our downtown, and, you know, this year we had an example of one property owner taking half the funds for their one building on one lot. And so, or you could even say, you can call it multiple buildings, right? But it's still on one lot. So one property, one property owner received half the funds for a whole program for a whole year. That doesn't seem fair if we now have, you know, 10 other properties that come in the rest of the year, we're only going to be able to fund five of those instead of funding, you know, nine properties or 10 properties and only funding, you know, six.
That's kind of related to what I was thinking. If, is there a short window where people can apply? Or if, let's say, you know, a person who owns those four businesses right there, if they were to get an awning for each one, and it was $4,000, they've taken up, you know, four of those grants or $4,000 of it, then months later, someone else wants it? Has anyone been denied their application based on everything's used up, sorry, Joe took it all, or whatever?
No. So the, the agency has not responded to that issue in the past, and we believed it was because the grant amount was too small at $500. So we sought the agency's approval to increase them to $1,000. And since we've seen that increase, we've seen more popularity in it. And so I think our focus, kind of going back to a point Brian had made earlier, and to what Counselor Collins had made earlier, the, this, the funding for these grants comes from the taxes from the building owners, not necessarily the business owners. And so that's why, that's why our grant-
That's a good thing to note.
Our grant is focused on the buildings-
Got it.
Because that's where, that's where the revenue for this comes from.
I missed that. Thank you for that clarification.
And Tyler, when did we increase that amount from $500 to $1,000?
I want to say that was about six or eight months ago.
Yeah, so it's been within this last year. So we wouldn't have had that problem before, but we are seeing more interest. I mean, even demonstrated by this one person, was one property owner that applied for four, was it four or five?
Five.
Five. Five. But we know that there's additional interest out there. And so this year might be a year where we, we oversubscribe, you know, more people apply than we have funds to give. So we anticipate that that could be a real problem moving forward. It hasn't been in the past because the grants were just so small, people didn't take advantage of it.
Well, it just seems like if I owned that building and I wanted for that whole section to be nicer, and I wanted the barber shop and the crystal mirror and all those businesses to have a new awning, or, you know, something done to the facade, it seems like it would make that part of downtown better. If we haven't had that problem yet, I would think it'd be possible to not address the problem before it's ever happened. But if, say, you know, they, you've run out of the grant money, then anyone who received it in this calendar year, fiscal year, is not eligible the following year. Couldn't they word something like that?
Yeah, and I think, you know, to answer that question, I would look at it and say, you have two different programs. You have the building improvement grant program and the minor improvement grant program. The minor improvement program is really intended to do a minor improvement on a property. And so the, the building improvement grant program is designed to do more major improvements, right? So I would say for this one property owner that applied for five different grants for five, you know, awnings on the one building, that, that project should have been done through the building improvement grant program, which it was. And so he saw an opportunity to also apply for the minor improvement grant program and to get additional money to pay more money towards his project. Now, there's matching requirements for the building improvement that there are not for the minor improvement. So again, I think keeping a project to a property owner limited to $1,000 with no match makes sense. And, you know, if, if the crystal mirror and, you know, all those examples wanted to have all their awnings replaced at one time, the building owner wanted to replace all of them, we would direct them to apply for a building improvement grant, not a minor improvement grant.
Not game of the system.
Yeah, it seems like if they already got the money from the other building grant, they should have just been told, no, we already helped you pay for that. I mean-
Right, and so, and what happened in this particular instance was, we had a building improvement grant program. The work on that grant program included not only the awnings, there was additional work. They submitted the invoices and got reimbursed for the other work. At that time, we assumed that the awning work was, was done, they were, they were going away. So we ended up closing out that, that project. Is that right, Tyler?
That's how I believe it.
Yes, so we ended up closing out the building improvement grant, not having funded the awnings, and then the minor improvement grant came afterwards. And so they, they were, they were separated a little bit in terms of timing and, and the approach, and so-
That seems like a procedural no. Like, I'm sorry, you had the budget to do it, you messed up and didn't do it, wait till next year. I mean, I don't think they should be allowed to do both unless it's two entirely separate things.
Right, and, and there was no, and there was no money from the building improvement grant program that went towards the awnings because we closed out that grant with only funding the other portions of the project. So no, he didn't receive two pots of money. I think that was his design, to be honest. But that, what, functionally, that didn't happen because we did not give him any money towards the awnings under his building improvement grant program. We closed that out before he then came in later and said, hey, now I have these minor improvement grants. And so I think he's hopeful, and he's arguing with the staff, and we're saying, no, we're not going to give you money for both. And in fact, the minor improvement grant money, we're fine to give you that because you've qualified underneath the program requirements at the time. But, and that's more money than you would have received had you've been paid out through the building improvement grant program. So it's to his advantage. He's getting, you know, the, the better end of the deal, the way that he did it. We want to avoid that circumstance in the future, right? Minor improvement grants are really meant for minor improvements. It's not meant to cobbled together as many minor improvements on your one property to get the most amount of money. If you want to do that, do a building improvement grant and call it good.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
I know, isn't that a surprise? I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can, can a minor impro, I know major improvement grants can go to unoccupied buildings. I don't know who to ask. Can a minor improvement grant also go to an unoccupied building?
Yes.
Can we change that?
Um, that's, that's certainly up to your discretion. I think that a potential issue you run into that, if you run into making rules regarding that would be, it may not incentivize building owners to do upkeep on vacant property, which may exacerbate the issues involving, that are involved in keeping that property vacant.
Okay.
Again, I think that when you're thinking of the minor improvement program, and when, and when we as staff are marketing the program to the building owners, we're marketing it as minor improvements, like, for example, one local restaurant in the downtown area used that minor improvement grant to fix kitchen doors. Another business used it for painting of the facade of their building. Another used it for preparation for additional work that they were going to do. So that's how, that is the design and purpose of the program. And much of the, a lot of these larger expenses that have been applied for, we have funded them. But as Brian had said earlier, that, for an, for example, this project that prompted us to make this change was focused solely on a major improvement and already received a building improvement grant. And so we're trying, we're, we're trying to amend these rules in the program to ensure that it's focused on the minor improvements that we believe that the agency initially created the program to-
I was just thinking, if there's a way that we can get business or building owners, not business owners, building owners, who are just like, I own this building, I don't even live in this state, I don't care if anybody ever moves into this building, that's what I was hoping to create a disincentive. But that would not do, would not do that.
I, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I would, I would say, I don't know, I have to go back and look. I don't know how many of our grants that we've given out to building owners who don't live in the state. Most of them are local.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to create a duel around that.
No, I'm just saying that's pretty minor, that, that concern, that issue. I don't know if that's ever come up.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I think this proposal is spot on. Looking at it from my lens, this, this person could be gaming the system, they could be double-dipping, and they're coming dangerously close to death by scheme.
So we have a motion?
Yep, there's a, there's a recommended motion.
So moved.
Second. Moving to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Nope.